Good evening, everybody. It's now six o'clock. Welcome to the meeting. Dominic, you just raised your hand. Was that an accident? All right. So welcome to this evening's scrutiny meeting. It feels like a long time since the last one. I'm not sure how everybody else feels about that. It's 6:00 PM. This meeting is being held under the regulations, which came into effect on the 4th of April in response to the COVID-19 situation. I'm councillor Caroline Brook and I'm chairperson of the committee. There's a few housekeeping reminders to run through due to the new working practices and in response to regulations. First of all, please can I ask everyone present in this virtual meeting that your microphones remain muted and your camera remains turned off whilst you're not addressing the meeting to reduce background noise and avoid unintentional disturbances? Please can I also advise that the open parts of the meeting are being audio recorded and live streamed from the council's website. And in addition, a video recording of the meeting will be uploaded to the council's YouTube channel after the meeting. Members and officers where appropriate for each item, please use the chat function in the meeting to indicate you wish to speak or raise a point of order or explanation. I'll then invite you to speak and Matthew will also be monitoring this with me. And I'll ask you in turn, therefore I'd encourage all members to keep your contributions clear and concise as possible, particularly to try and stay within the two-hour time if we are able. When speaking referring to the agenda papers, you're all saying you can't see me. The reason you can't see me is because I am in my notes. And when I'm in my notes, my camera on my iPad goes off and I'm a one-machine person. So that's why you can't see me. You will when I come back to the actual meeting itself. When speaking referring to the agenda papers, please make sure that you reference the page or paragraph number, particularly in the long first paper that we're going to go through when we get to appendix four. Please note the duration of this virtual meeting is planned for two hours. Finally, if members wish to leave the meeting at any point, could they please make themselves known to me through the chat function? I'll announce to the meeting that you are to leave the meeting. Please can I ask the democratic service officers to undertake a roll call of members of scrutiny to confirm who is present this evening? Matthew, could I please ask you to do that for us?
Thank you very much, Chair. Members, if you could just unmute your mics and just make the roll call a little bit quicker. Councillor Becker?
Present.
Councillor Bronk? Councillor Bronk?
I think councillor Bronk's having some difficulties getting into the meeting.
Okay, I'll come back to councillor Bronk. Councillor Brook?
Yeah, I'm definitely here.
Thank you. Councillor Crask?
Present.
Councillor Hiscock?
Yeah, I'm here.
Councillor Horle?
Good evening, I'm here.
Councillor Lumby, Chair, sent his apologies and is being replaced by councillor Gemmell. Councillor Gemmell, are you present? Councillor Gemmell?
Councillor Gemmell did say she may be a little late due to work commitments, but she will be here.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Power?
Yes, I'm here, thank you.
Councillor Scott?
Yeah, here, thank you.
And councillor Weir?
I'm here, present.
Thank you, members. And I'll just go back. Councillor Bronk, are you present at all? Chair, I'll let the meeting go on and then I'll see if I can get councillor Bronk into the meeting.
Thank you, Matthew, appreciated. So we've already heard apologies from councillor Lumby, who's being replaced this evening by councillor Gemmell, who will join us shortly. Do we have any declarations of interest this evening? Please indicate in chat if you need to declare any interest. Okay, no, no declarations of interest. So we shall move on to the next part. Okay, with regard to announcements. So all of the members of scrutiny, so myself, councillor Weir and councillor Clare, we've all had a meeting together and discussed how to progress the mental health agenda. Councillor, we are spotted and now I can't find it again, the draft that you did for me to look at. So I will come back to you on that, if I may. But we will bring that, send that out to the committee to discuss with you via email whether you're happy once we've created the business case format and what we would like our council's response to be within that. And that's it for announcements. Minutes of the meeting of the 2nd of July 2020. So the meeting minutes are on pages five to 10 of the main agenda pack. Matthew, did we have any amendments that we haven't already seen?
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Bronk, Chair, passed forward five or six typographical and grammatical errors on the minutes. And if members are happy, I'll incorporate that into a final version. But there was nothing on there that affects the substance of the minutes, Chair.
Thank you, Matthew. I move that the previous minutes be agreed as a true record. Is that agreed by everybody?
Agreed.
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 Thank you. Public participation, there were no requests that I was aware of. Have there been any since from the public, Matthew?
Nothing, Chair, no.
Okay, we shall go straight on to our first agenda item then, core agenda item, consultation on the changes to the council tax reduction scheme. This report's being presented to Cabinet on 16th of September. And we're being asked to comment on the proposals within the report. It's a long report, so after councillor Cutler has introduced it, I'll break it down with regard to questions. So councillor Cutler, can I invite you to introduce the paper?
Thank you, Chair. The council tax reduction scheme was introduced in 2013 in place of duty on the billing authorities to create a scheme for working age applicants. Winchester introduced a very generous means-tested scheme that gives up to 100% reduction in council tax liability. The council is required to review the scheme manually and consult public and stakeholders and other major precepting authorities if the scheme is going to be significantly amended. With the introduction of universal credit, the scheme has become administratively very time-consuming and therefore very costly and also has made claimants reluctant to make a prompt application leading to loss of entitlement. Most local authorities have moved to a simplified bandit system. And we now propose that Winchester City Council should do the same. The revenue and benefits team have worked really hard over the last few months to produce this paper and to develop this proposal which will replace the means-tested scheme with a simple income grid model. Or simplified, I'd say, rather than simple, because it's still not simple. The income grid has been designed to minimise the number of current, and that was the claimants in May, applicants that would lose out on the scheme whilst not increasing the cost of the scheme to the council. It's proposed that a discretionary exceptional hardship fund be created to help those current applicants disadvantaged by the new scheme. Cabinet will be asked to approve this statutory consultation on the proposed scheme. The team will continue to model grids against the more recent claimant information. And having just spoken to Terry, she's looking at some models that make the grid look slightly more consistent. She's also looking at perhaps increasing the number of looking at how the model would look with more children allowed, added into the claimant process. So we will continue to model against the, to make sure that we minimise the number of claimants that would lose out under this scheme and so therefore minimise the need for discretionary exceptional hardship fund. And we, you know, on receiving the results of the consultation, we'll obviously amend the paper that will again come back to scrutiny and Cabinet for a final decision with council. I think that's all I'll say at the moment, Chair. But obviously open to questions.
Thank you, councillor Cutler. So first of all, I'm going to take questions on the bulk of the initial report piece up to page 28. Does anybody have any questions on that first section? Councillor Power?
Thank you, Chair. And my question relates to point two, 2.4 on page number 16. I am not intimately acquainted with universal credit, but I was under the impression that having more than two children, where those children were born after something like 2016, that the universal credit was reduced. However, where there were more than two children born before that date, there was no reduction universal credit. Could an officer clarify that for me, please?
Who'd like?
Chair, Terry Horner's on the call, so she should be able to answer a question for you.
Hello there. Can you see me?
Yeah.
Councillor Power, yes. That's correct. There is a limitation on the amount paid out to claimants on universal credit. At the moment, most of the government schemes and benefits relate specifically to two children, a maximum of two children households. So anything above that, there's generally no additional benefits allowed in there. I can't tell you the year off the top of my head as to when the change occurred in universal credit, but I could certainly find out and circulate it if you're interested. But there is a limitation. So hence that's what this scheme is modelled around because it follows suit with the other benefits in the system, along housing benefits, universal credit, et cetera, which is why at the moment it's been limited to the two people.
Does that answer your question, Councillor Power?
It does, thank you.
Councillor Crask, you wanted to ask a question?
Thank you, yes. A question regarding section six, consultation and communication, page 17. Just one, so it mentions about a formal consultation required with the public. Just wondering what a successful consultation looks like and if we think we've got the right material to engage with the public to help them understand the simplified approach and achieve the right level of consultation and feedback.
Terry, is that you again?
Happy to take that question, yes. Yes, we do. It will be quite an in-depth consultation, hence why it will run for quite a considerable period, somewhere between six to eight weeks. We will reach out to as many claimants as possible. We obviously intend to liaise with major preceptors to ensure that they're fully included in the process. Obviously, other council taxpayers will be invited to comment as well because obviously the funding of CTR is borne by all council taxpayers in the district, members yourselves, et cetera. So the scheme will be open to a large number of people. We've consulted on previous occasions, but not for a few years. So back in 2013, 2014, when the scheme was introduced, we had quite a consultation exercise then. It was quite in-depth. There was a good response. I wouldn't say we had tens of thousands of people responding, but it was a good response. And there was a mixture of respondees from that consultation itself. So I think in the main, yes, we will have a good consultation process. We have got the information in order to reach out to all stakeholders involved. And hopefully that will bring us a good mixture of the responses that we're looking for.
Thank you, Chair. Councillor Power, can I remind you to turn off your camera and please mute your microphone? Thank you. And I'd just like to advise the group that councillor Bronk is now here and in the meeting. So we have no further questions on the main bulk of the report up to page 28. So I'll now take questions on appendix one. Do we have any questions on appendix one? Councillor Horle?
Thank you, Chair. And I think I may perhaps be on the main part rather than the appendix, actually. Sorry, I didn't press my button quickly enough. But thank you for allowing me to ask a couple of questions. Councillor Cutler, in his opening remarks, they said that there may be some people likely to be disadvantaged by the new scheme. Could he outline or Terry, help us to understand who those people might be who are likely to be disadvantaged? And my second follow-up to that is really to understand whether the hardship fund is guaranteed to catch everyone who might fall through because of the amendments that you're proposing? Because obviously, our current scheme is generous and we want surely to maintain that level of support, particularly as people move into universal credit. As you know, I've been speaking very proactively around that over the last many months and years. But are we guaranteeing that that hardship fund will be accessible and easily accessed by those who might fall through otherwise? Maybe one of you could help me to understand that, please. Thank you.
Terry's internet has a tendency to do this.
It sounds like you're hoovering, councillor Cutler.
Sorry?
It sounds like you're vacuuming.
It's not me, I'm afraid. I think Terry, a couple of meetings we've been, seems to have a bit of feedback come in when she speaks. But I will ask her to attempt to follow this up. But my understanding is that the modelling that the team have been doing has been to minimise the number of people that actually would see a reduction in their claim, which is one of the reasons why there are one or two oddities about the grid. And this has been modelled on the May figures for claimants. And I think that left came to around about 30 people out of several thousand applicants. So it's a fairly small figure that we could quite comfortably deal with with the exceptional hardship scheme. The problem, and as I say, the plan is to model further with the more recent figures to make sure that that is still having the, you know, absolutely minimising the number of people that would be disadvantaged by the scheme. However, there are also questions, as I raised before, about whether we look at whether we could include family, an extra payment for people with more children or whether the grid should be in a way more consistent? Because, I mean, various people have looked at it and commented to me before this meeting that the grid is not entirely logical. Well, the reason it's not is because it fits. And so the team are continuing to model to look at the best fit here. And so we'll have a range of options for the best fit. But obviously, the principles need to be consulted on. So I don't know if Terry's got anything to add to that.
Yeah, sorry, I'll just turn the Hoover back on, I'm afraid. The, yeah, the figures are in the report, councillor Horle. So there's a link to a rather large spreadsheet. I'm sorry about the size bit, but there's a lot of different options to model through. So I appreciate that it isn't as clear as it might be from that. But we've tried to make it as simple as possible. The disadvantaged people predominantly are those in the family households with more than two children because of the way we originally modelled. We're using the government's guidance of a maximum of two children. So we may address that issue when we model with the three and the four-plus children to see what that effect is. But of course, the more obviously we spread across the schemes, obviously the amount of that benefit, as it were, that discount will reduce across the board of everybody because there is only obviously a finite amount of money to go around. In regards to the hardship scheme, the, I can't say that the hardship scheme will cover absolutely everyone, but I can completely agree with what councillor Cutler's just said, that we have tried our absolute best and we will continue to try to make sure that we scoop up the majority of those claimants currently in existence to limit the number of winners and losers so that the scheme is considered a very fair scheme across the board. But in regards to hardship, I mean, there will be a pot of money there from the modelling, if we continue with the modelling as it is at the moment. And we do hope that that would be sufficient to assist those families into or out of that scheme, as it were, from the current CTR that they're in receipt of down to the discount that they're getting at the moment on council tax.
Chair, might I just ask a very quick follow-up to Terry and Neil? And thank you both for your reassurance. Given that we are changing and the whole, the universal credit and all that goes with that, there is quite a lot of change for people and it's very difficult circumstances. Councillor Cutler, are you looking to perhaps with the officer team, put in a review in X month's time so that we can just look back and make sure that we haven't put anything into that table or any of the adjustments we've made? That we are suddenly finding our numbers being slightly different? Just because obviously, when you are making a change, you know, sometimes things fall out that you're not entirely aware of. And if we decided or recommended a review in a period of time, whatever we think is reasonable, that would perhaps be reassuring to all of us that we are heading in the right direction and the new model is as fair as we can make it for everyone.
Could I, would you like me to answer that? I was just, what I was just going to add was... Hello, is that okay?
Yep, go ahead.
What I was just going to say is this scheme can be reviewed on an annual basis. So absolutely, it's kept under review on a general basis anyway. So obviously, if we did find there were some discrepancies once we get into next year, because obviously COVID has done some strange things to benefit CTR, HB, et cetera. So we will be watching that quite closely. So certainly next year, it would be held under review as far as the officer team was concerned. And obviously, we would put something forward if we thought we could change it. With the proposals that we've made, what it does do is it makes it a lot easier to make those changes subsequently because obviously it has been, it is simplifying the scheme. So from that point of view, I think it would be, yes, certainly it would be kept under review. Sorry.
Yeah, I mean, what I'd add on that is that what we would hope is that by this modelling, existing claimants will not be disadvantaged, as we've already discussed. New claimants will come into the scheme as it is, the new scheme. Now, if we found that there were huge anomalies within that, that some new claimants coming in were somehow completely out of pocket compared with the previous, I can't quite see how that would happen, actually. But obviously, as Terry's indicated, the scheme is reviewed every year. Sometimes it's a light-touch review and this is a major review. So it's there to be looked at every year. And I'm sure we would, in implementing a new simplified system, have a pretty good look at it next year.
Chair, I'd like for us to admit it as a committee that we would want that to happen. I think that's a, if Neil and Terry are both saying that's reasonable, I think that would be great reassurance if we all committed to doing that. And if nothing needed to change, great, that would be fantastic. But at least we all have the opportunity to look at how it had gone, given the significance of it. Thank you.
Absolutely. Do we have a timescale that you want that commitment to, councillor Horle?
Well, I think as Neil and Terry have said, it's up for an annual review. I think if we commit to that, that wouldn't clearly add any additional work to the officer team, so that feels quite reasonable.
We do have a deadline each year to complete the scheme. So the scheme has to be in place by 31st of January. So generally, we have a timescale to work to. So we'd probably start that very early in the new year, really. Probably the early summer time, so June, July time, we would start the process. So it would be complete by Christmas.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, so we have no further questions on the appendix, on the main bulk of the paper. So any questions on appendix one, please? No, nothing's flashed up. I'd just like to advise the group that councillor Gemmell is now in the meeting. So welcome councillor Gemmell. Right, appendix two. Any questions on appendix two from anybody, please? No? No, nothing come up. Appendix three, do we have any questions on appendix three of this paper? That's quite a long one. And I have a light. Councillor Crask, please.
Thanks, Chair. I think just a question in terms of appendix three. Is this a draft of the consultation document that's going to be going out?
That's correct. And obviously, it will be adapted subsequent to, obviously, the conversations that are being had at the moment. But that's a, yes, a draft at the moment.
Okay, if I can add a further comment, Chair. Just if I'm a claimant, I might find this quite difficult to absorb and to understand the impact. So just a comment there that it might be worth having it reviewed by a member of the public that's not familiar with perhaps the terminology and make sure it's readable or else you might get a whole bunch of questions coming in.
Thank you, councillor Crask.
Would you like to come back on that?
Sure.
It was just a comment that we've had quite a lot of work undertaken by a consultant who's dealt with this in a lot of authorities around the country. So he has benefited from quite a lot of feedback so far already from other local authorities that have already been down this road and simplified their schemes or changed their schemes. So the documentation that we've used has been well utilised elsewhere. So I'm hoping it should be okay for all that decide to review it. But obviously, we will be happy to take comments back and feedback if there's anything that can be improved on.
Thank you. Councillor Horle, you had a question. Afterwards, can I remind you to turn off your microphone and camera, please?
Sorry, councillor Bronk. Thank you. I think I might be in the same space as councillor Crask. It feels rather an onerous document. I know in housing, we've had our reader panel for many years where we have got members of the residents locally to read the documentation and make sure it was all clearly understood and they got the gist of it. And I think, given the importance of this, it would not go amiss to actually just trial the documentation with some relevant residents just to make sure that even though the consultants have the benefit of other authorities, that we're doing the absolute best we can in this round, particularly in the current climate. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Horle. Terry, are you happy for me to make a note for that to be taken on board? That maybe we should trial it on other residents?
Absolutely, yes, that's absolutely fine. We do have a very tight turnaround to meet the rest of the committee structure going through the year. But if there's people available in the next couple of weeks, that would be excellent. that would be excellent.
Fabulous.
Thank you, Terry. Maybe talk to your housing colleagues and just see.
Absolutely, I will do councillor Horrall, thank you.
Do we have any further questions on appendix three? No, appendix four then, the one with the quite small writing. Do we have any questions on appendix four? There's a lot of detail in there. No, oh, I do have a red button. Councillor Crask.
Thanks, I just wanted to check what the purpose is of appendix four and what the audience is. Is this provided for us or is this going out as part of the consultation?
Sorry, I can't actually see appendix four at the moment. Can you tell me what the title is, please?
I can. It is called Queen's City Council Council Tax Reduction Scheme S13A and Schedule 1 of the Local Government Finance Act 1992.
Oh, so that is the actual scheme. Yes. Yeah, thank you councillor Cutler. Yeah, that is the actual, so that will be the actual finished scheme ultimately that we will produce at the end of the, the process. But this is, the, the one at the moment is how it stands at present and what the, with the proposed changes included.
I had a question. You've based, as you said, some of the, for example, appendix two on what other councils have done. I just wondered how much base, how many other councils you've based the actual council tax scheme on? And if they've been feeding back on the, the way they've gone about the consultation process, if they've given any feedback on the scheme itself that we are proposing?
So the consultant itself has dealt with 86 of these schemes apparently, so he's, he's taken the feedback. We haven't liaised directly with any of those councils at present, but depending on how our scheme ultimately presents itself, we will be looking to talk to councils that where, where our schemes are roughly aligned with, with theirs, just to get feedback further from that, but as part of the consultation process.
Thank you, Terry. Any other questions on appendix four? Yep, councillor Bronk.
Thank you. I think page 175 falls within appendix four, is that correct? That, that page is where the proposed new policy for the hardship or exceptional hardship policy commences. Paragraph 1.3 of that policy refers to the applicant needing to provide evidence of exceptional circumstances above and beyond a financial reason, given that their income of bleak capital will have already been determined to be in excess of the scheme levels. So my concern about that statement, if that's the only circumstance in which the hardship fund is available, is that it might not extend to the sort of quirky cases that we were talking to just slightly earlier on about people who might otherwise have been captured but for some reason are no longer regarded as doing so. I would have expected that to be, you know, particularly a financial reason and that this policy doesn't extend to them. If somebody can just clarify that for me, please?
Yeah, sorry, I can't actually see the wording at the moment, but I will, I will go back and have a look at it after the meeting and I can clarify in an email if that helps. But it sounds like that's referring specifically to the capping of the capital amount of income at £6,000 rather than the current £16,000. Because otherwise, obviously, this is a financially related issue, talking about CTR discounts and council tax.
Councillor, it looks like you're talking but you're on mute.
Yeah. Item 1.3 actually says the exceptional hardship fund will also be open to those applicants that, that have applied but not qualified. Item 1.2 talks about who it's broadly available to. 1.3 is an additional group of people that it might be available to, who have been excluded by the purely financial figures from any CTR. So I think that's, that's an addition rather than, and would require some additional information other than financial, because they've already been rejected on the financial information. Whereas 1.2 is, is really the exceptional hardship within the fund for those that have already been accepted but may have taken a lower award, i.e. not the 100% award. So I, I think it is covered there, but Terry has undertaken to have a look at it, so we'll, we'll come back to it, Tony.
Thank you. I have no further questions appearing on appendix four, as councillor Bronk's already taken us into the hardship piece of appendix five. Does anybody else have any questions on appendix five? Councillor Horrall?
Thank you, Chair. In the document appendix five, it says that you have to make another application for assistance for the exceptional hardship fund over and above or where required by the council. Do we, question, do we expect people to make another application, given they're not easy in the first instance? And the other question relates to the appeals, which is covered by the Local Government Finance, Finance Act for 1992, if the outcome of an, an assessment is not favourable. How, can Terry just give us a very brief indicator of how that works, please?
The, the exceptional hardship for, well, the appeals and the exceptional hardship will make a process so that the, it will be considered by somebody other than the team that have obviously processed the CTR reduction, just to make sure that another set of eyes have been on the actual, in the consideration of the, the discount itself. That's likely to involve somebody like myself or perhaps one of the directors. And then obviously, they will, we will make those decisions together. The, so what was your first question regarding the?
My first question was, it says in that appendix whether we have to, whether the applicant has to make another application for the hardship. And it says, you know, if the council decides and just, you know, is that really necessary to have another application? Is that part of the, the requirement?
I mean, that, that would generally be the case in the, in particular issues like this, because obviously, we want, what we're wanting them to do is to explain clearly as to why, you know, why, why the exceptional hardship is necessary, because as we were saying earlier, we don't think it will cover absolutely every single case. Otherwise, in effect, what we will be doing is effectively giving out the discount to every case that, that comes through the door, in essence. So there's got to be a cutoff with the, with the award of the, the discount itself. So, so yes, I think there will be a requirement for an application not quite as in depth as, as not, you know, particularly, you know, if you're thinking about the housing benefit applications, et cetera, it should be a relatively simplified and they can make reference to the application that they've already made, for instance. So hopefully, it won't be too onerous a system.
Could I, could I make a plea for that to be as simple as possible? Because I think, again, if you're already struggling to have another rather onerous document, just, you know, just frightens people, makes it difficult. I accept that you'll be looking perhaps for additional data, but just that's a plea. Thank you.
Appreciate that. It's not intended just to frustrate the system and add an extra element of complexity in there. So yes, it's got to be, it's got to be a useful exercise. So we don't intend it to be any longer than it needs to be.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. I don't have any other questions on appendix five, so do we have any questions on appendix six, please? Sorry, my screen frozen, it wouldn't let me unmute. No questions on appendix six at all? Okay. So that concludes the paper for questions. So let's go on. Does anybody have any debate on this paper, please? Councillor Weir?
Thank you, Chair. I just briefly wanted to thank Terry for the phenomenal amount of work that must have gone into preparing this, this document. I have had a look at a few other council CTR schemes and it was, well, reassuring in a sense to say that nobody else had got anything that looked at, at least any simpler and some of them a lot more complex than ours. I'm also particularly grateful that we are continuing to maintain the generosity of our scheme at 100% for those on income support and other legacy benefits. We are one of the leaders as far as that's concerned. Took a brief look, one of our, our near neighbours only pays a 75% reduction to those on income support. So I think it's very welcome that we're maintaining the generosity of our scheme. Clearly, there is some fine tuning to be done and the consultational will play an important part in that. And I look forward to seeing the paper when it comes back in its final form later in the year. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Weir. Councillor Power?
Thank you, Chairman. There is an enormous amount of work in, in, in there for us, so goodness knows what it must have been like for staff. I think it does meet the need to simplify the process and therefore economise on staff time. And given the commitment to monitor those most affected and the impact, I'm very happy for this go forward consultation and look forward to residents interrogating me on the why, the why and the where for. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Power. Councillor Horrall next, please.
Thank you, Chair. Two, just two or three short points. Firstly, I think we've been historically very proud of the scheme that we have been offering. And to continue that generosity, I think is really, really important testimony to the council and our attitude to all of our residents. I think that's an important, important statement of intent. And I also thank the officers this evening for taking on board some of the suggestions. I know we're adding a few more questions and perhaps some further analysis and review of the document, but I appreciate that you've been sympathetic to those questions and, and happy to put those actions in place. So thank you for that. And given the uncertain times that we're in, I think the availability of this fund is crucial and therefore support it going through to the next stage. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Horrall. If we have no further debate, I shall then go back to the paper and sum up the points I've taken down on it. So only two main points, recommendations from scrutiny, back to cabinet, and that's the commitment to reviewing the process. And that's annually, and as mentioned by Terry, that has to be done by 31st of January. So that will be actually really good timing because then it will be a few months post adoption and a good time to review. And then the appendix three will be tested on some residents or maybe can I suggest councillors before going to the full resident base? And do we all agree that that's a good summary of our actions?
Agreed.
Agreed. Right, so going, so going back to this, the recommendation was that we comment on the proposals within the report and so that's that done. So we shall now move on to the next agenda item, if everybody's happy with that, which is the general fund budget 2020/21. Councillor Cutler, Richard Botham, which one of you would like to introduce this paper for us this evening?
Chair, I'm, sorry, I'm happy to introduce the paper.
Okay, yes, please.
The paper sets out the detail of the revised general fund budget, which will be recommended for council approval later this month. The budget details were widely discussed at the budget briefing on the 23rd of July. Whilst we continue closely to monitor the situation, particularly parking and rent receipts from commercial properties, the base case remains broadly as discussed at the briefing. The paper also shows the indicative figures for the medium term financial strategy, which we have already started working on. In addition to the budget proposals, this paper makes a recommendation that the Guildhall remains closed for the general public hire for the next 12 months, that a venue only service is maintained. This will put 13 Guildhall staff at risk of redundancy. It is anticipated that two staff will be retained to manage requirements for council and ongoing venue only services. And we would hope that some of the other 11 would be able to be redeployed within the council. This decision will help stem the mounting additional losses from what was already an additional loss making building. The paper also recommends that virtual meetings of the council continue for the remainder of the municipal year, but this be reviewed on a quarterly basis, i.e. in December. Currently, it would be impossible to return to in person meetings for several reasons. The limited spaces available, big enough for appropriate social distancing, the technological limitations to hybrid meetings so that vulnerable members and officers could attend virtually, that, that's actually not possible at the moment. And of course, the legal limit of 30 people for indoor gatherings, which is still in place. All in all, we feel ruling out a return before Christmas gives everyone certainty of how things will be operating. I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you for the introduction councillor Cutler. Do we have any questions on this budget paper? Councillor Horrall?
Thank you, Chair. I have a question about the Guildhall, which we all know has been a drain on city council resources in the past. However, could I ask about the, I think it's a covenant that existed on the Guildhall when we had the investment of monies to renovate the building, whether we have any responsibility for the access of that building to the public to ensure that by virtue of limiting the activities we hold there, we're somehow breaking the legal responsibilities we have for the monies that were donated to us?
Chairman, I can take that response if you wish.
Yes, please.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Horrall for that question. It's Laura Taylor, chief executive here. Yes, we're very aware that the, the refurbishment of the Bapsy Hall was funded by a legacy from indeed the Marchioness and we're very proud. from indeed the Marchioness, and we're very proud of the refurbishment work that was done there some 10 or so years ago. And that legacy did indeed have a condition that the room could be used as a public hall and created as a public hall in her honour. And importantly, the report sets out that although we are making a decision not to open the Guildhall to full public use, that should people wish to rent a part of the building and do that on a, shall we call it, full repairing condition, as in all security, all cleaning, et cetera, that they would be able to do so. And therefore, we believe at this stage that the legacy is fulfilled through the use that we've set out in the report at this stage. Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Counselor Horle?
I hear the Chief Executive say she believes, I hope that we're taking advice just to make sure that we're not falling into a trap and that we are just clarifying that decision that we're taking. Thank you.
Counselor Horle, yes, indeed, we did an initial review before completing the paper, and indeed, we are continuing to check that now. But our working assumption is that the conditions of the legacy will be fulfilled for use in the way that is being set out at the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Laura. Counselor Crask, you had a question?
Thanks, Chair. In terms of what we're commenting on, are we looking at the Guildhall or the revenue budget as well in appendix one at this point in time? So can I ask a question about appendix one?
Yes, you may. Sorry, my machine keeps being really slow, so I press unmute and then it just sits muted for a while. Yes, please, Counselor Crask.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Just looking at the numbers, which obviously behind and associated with the decision on the Guildhall, just looking at the forecast budget variance and the fall off in revenues, can obviously see the fall off in revenue around the Guildhall. There's a fall off in revenue around development management. Can someone explain that fall off in revenue there? And that's on page 203.
I think Mr Botham's on the call, Chairman, if that's helpful?
Thank you. Yeah, thank you, Chair. The figures there in relation to development management are in relation to a range of fees, planning application fees, pre-op advice. And it's just projections for the potential for the reduced income through that activity.
Thanks, Chekinas. Another comment?
Yes, please. Yes, go ahead.
Thanks. Because obviously, this, and hopefully, Richard, this feeds into other thinking around what it is you're doing with the budget in terms of forward planning. But, and I keep mentioning SIL as well, and the reserved funds that we have, or the restricted funds that we have, in terms of the £10 million, I think it's 8.9 million of SIL. Just how much flexibility we have for that SIL, and what that could be used for as part of perhaps of the capital programme. There's a point for me around the Northwolds Pavilion. We've got £800,000 in the budget for that Northwolds Pavilion. So maybe it's not the right time to be looking at this, thinking about this, but at some point, I'd like some feedback around SIL, maybe prioritisation perhaps around other items as well, such as the Northwolds Pavilion, if we're spending £800,000 on that in this coming year, or sorry, in the discus year.
Sure. The two areas are slightly different. You pick up on the fact that SIL obviously could support capital investment, which wouldn't affect the income fees in appendix one. But you're exactly right. Reviewing how we can make best use of our reserves, and particularly restrictive reserves such as SIL, which whilst it's a restrictive reserve, has a great deal of flexibility around how we could invest it. And to that point, we are bringing forward a paper on the future of SIL and the amount of SIL that we're holding and the potential options we have around that, including some proposals for some short-term investments, but also then exactly how we make best use of it moving forward. So I'll take the point you're making, and that will come forward in future budget papers later in this coming year.
Very good. Many thanks.
Counselor Crask, would you like me to put that down as a recommendation?
Yes, please, if you wouldn't mind.
Do you want to just summarise for me how you'd like me to recommend it?
If I may, I probably raised this in order in governance previously, but consideration of restricted reserves, notably SIL funding, and what options there might be to consider that funding as part of the capital programme.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Crask.
If that works, Richard.
Yes, happy with that.
Thank you.
Counselor Horle, please.
Thank you, Chair. It relates to, in the main body of the report, a reference to the housing company, which Mr Botham will know, we've debated long and hard over a significant period of time, and the £2.5 million that we set aside for the housing company. I see that's being pulled back and an emphasis now on leasing and a sort of revision of how we put money into this area. Given that we all know that housing is one of the important areas for us as a council, and ensuring that the different tenures are available to our residents, I was slightly surprised to see this sort of, in the report, in a fairly lightweight, given the work and effort that's gone into housing, the housing company. I wondered if you could elaborate further on the decision that's being recommended in here that is substantially different from that which we had all supported previously.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. With regard to the housing company, we've done a lot of work around modelling the business plan for what that could deliver. Members will be aware that the borrowing rate for housing through the HRA was reduced and is now as low as it has ever been. And we're looking to build up the quality that we build through the HRA programme becomes extremely marginal when you build in effectively external competitor commercial borrowing rates, which is a requirement of the housing company. And so we were really struggling to make that business model work. One option that is open to us is to exploit the cheaper borrowing through the HRA, and that's to build through the HRA but to lease properties to a separate vehicle, which would be the housing company. And we've taken a device on that as an option. It's significantly more financially advantageous to develop that way through the company, rather than doing it through commercial borrowing rates, which are, as I say, that's a direct requirement, as we knew when we set the company up. But through a leasing model, it requires a lower initial capital investment. So that's the amount of equity that the council needs to put in to make it work. So I take the point about whether there should have been more detail in the report with regard to that. But we feel that's a much more advantageous model if we're going to build at the quality that the current programme builds at. The other option would be to build at cheaper, smaller, lower quality, and we're not recommending that at the moment.
Chair, could I ask a follow-up, if I may, that's related to the housing detail in the main report comes up in appendix three, which is a very significant change to the new build programme, to major repairs, to fire safety provision, all of which we hugely valued in our housing stock. And I appreciate times are tough, but actually, they're very, very significant changes, and therefore, it will impact what we're able to do. I mean, the fire safety provision, I know I was with you when we put the £1 million in originally, that's being maintained by the current portfolio holder, but there's some very significant differences here. And I just question whether everyone is fully aware of that level of amendment across the housing portfolio, accepting that it's a key part of our activity as a council currently. Thank you, Chair.
Chair, if I may comment on that point in particular. We initially set aside a million pound for investment in fire safety, in fire safety works, and we added a second million to that in the budget as well. With the works, well, we put it in there as a provisional sum pending the outcome of the Hackett review. We have plans for initial investment in the current year. Obviously, some of those plans have been delayed through the COVID period where no contractors were operating. We are anticipating some spend in the current year, but we're carrying forward the previous provisional sum, adding it to the additional budget, obviously spending some in the current year, and then forecasting how the remainder of that spend will be committed. So those changes in the HRA, and as are the other changes throughout the capital programme, mirror that carry forwards from the previous year, as well as some, a period of inactivity, obviously where contractors just simply weren't working throughout the first half of this budgetary. And sorry, and in addition, somebody working on forecasting the current build schemes in the new build programme as well.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Counselor Horle?
Not entirely, but I make the point in debate, Chair. I think it's a very significant strategic shift in direction, which I think all councillors should be fully aware of, even if it's short term. They were very well rolling it forward, but we're already told next year is difficult as well. So we need to be really clear about those strategic decisions we're making about something so important to us.
Counselor Lernery, you've raised your hand. Was that on purpose or by accident? Counselor Lernery, we can't hear you.
We'll try adjusting the technology. Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Right, thank you. I think Counselor Horle, for example, looks at along the coal line for fire safety. She'll discover that we still have a budget of over £2 million there. What we're talking about is re-profiling spend. We haven't changed any of our plans as far as the housing stock goes, but obviously, this year, it's actually been quite difficult to spend money that we would have really liked to spend on improving our housing stock and making those changes. And we'll certainly be looking to see whether we can accelerate spending. The money is there. It's just around how we get through that process of spending it wisely.
Thank you, Counselor Lernery. Counselor Horle, there we go. Counselor Power, you had a question?
Chairman, thank you, but it's been covered by Counselor Lernery. There is no de-commitment. It's just a matter of how much can be spent this year, and the sums in future years are very much comparable with the budget for this year, the original budget for this year.
I just wanted a follow-up on that question. And Counselor Lernery saying it's been difficult to spend that money. So are we looking at redoubling our efforts next year to try and spend double that budget and make sure that we do achieve all that we had planned to, and next year's achievements also?
We'll certainly be looking at whether it's possible to do that. However, as I said, we're still keen to spend that money wisely. So we won't be accelerating things at the expense of the amount we can achieve with the money we've got. We'll still be following our normal procurement practices and the rest of it. But clearly, where we have opportunities to move things forward, we'll take them.
Counselor Horle, you had another question?
Thank you, Chair. The replacement surgery has disappeared in the revised budget, and we know already from previous papers and other committees, the intention of the administration to ask, rather than us building the replacement surgery, which we know is long overdue for thousands of our residents, for their general practice support in the city, that the intention is for that to now be handled by not us, but by a third party. I'm just conscious that those sort of projects get lost in the scheme of things. We hear nothing. It's delayed. There's a debate, I know, about how that is likely to happen. But it's one of those projects that we all agree is fundamental to the health and wellness of our community, and is disappearing out of the capital budget. We understand that, given the administration's intent. But where do those projects disappear to? Where is the plan to make them happen via another means?
Chairman, I think Mr Bradford's on the call. He can assist with that, I'm sure.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Chairman. Counselor Horle, the project's still very much alive and underway, and we'd expect a report to come forward to, I think, estimated November Cabinet at the moment. Offers are due back in on the 14th of September, following the previous report. And then we will be assessing those offers and bringing forward recommendations for a preferred bidder in due course. So very much a project underway, operational, moving forward.
And if I may, Chair, just to ask, Mr Bradford, is that based on a sale of the land, or is that still up for debate?
As you recall, the report suggested it could either be a leasehold or freehold disposal. No decision taken on that yet.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Bradford and Counselor Horle. I haven't got any other indications for questions on this paper, so I shall move to debate. Does anybody have debate on this paper, please? Counselor Horle, you mentioned that you'd raised something in debate, so would you like to go first on debate?
Thank you, Chair, and I appreciate all the work that's gone into revising the general fund budget that Counselor Cutler has put forward here this evening. And I appreciate there is a significant task, but we have obviously benefited significantly from government funding to us, which has alleviated some of those gaps. So that is a very substantial sum that we are achieving, being accredited with. However, there are a significant number of directional changes in here, and I hear what some of the fellow councillors have said about we're just moving it ahead. But we're already told in these documents that the following year is exceedingly difficult. And therefore, I think some of the recommended changes for just rolling it forward are to be questioned. And I think all councillors should really look into the detail of this report to see what that direction of travel is. There's no guarantee at this point that future rolling, future spends rolled forward. We, there's no guarantee at this point that future rolling, future spends rolled forward to years, hence will be able to be achieved. And therefore, we need to be clear that we are therefore deprioritising some things in the hope that we will be able to achieve them in the future. There's a lot in here that has shifted. And I would ask all councillors to really interrogate that direction of travel. I'm particularly concerned about some of the amendments in the housing piece, the housing company, the HRA that has served us so well, and that we are absolutely still committed to some of those very important activities. I do not see us as a council saying we're saving a million pounds on fire safety. If we get some opportunity to spend that, then we absolutely should. I think it is it is one of those areas where you just should not touch some of those monies, excepting, of course, that we need the general guidance that is coming out from the various reviews being undertaken in this area. So I hope that some of the things that we see here this evening, we will have the chance to review again as we go forward, given, as I say, some of the significant differences that we are being recommended to approve. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, councillor Horrall. Do we have any other debate? Nope. So the only recommendation I have taken down is the consideration of restricted reserves, notably Sill funding. How could it contribute towards the budget post-COVID-19 budget? Do we have anything else I've missed in the recommendations? From us to Cabinet? No?
Chair, could I?
Yep, 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 yep. Councillor Horrall?
Sorry, Chair, there was one very important piece I omitted, which is the continuation of the virtual meetings, which is part of item two on page 188 in the recommendation before us this evening. Given that the government is encouraging us all to reengage, this is sort of counterintuitive. And we know we don't have the IT technology to support this, yet we've chosen not to install it. So it is a choice we have made to not allow ourselves to be able to access this. And I think there will be many councillors who are concerned that we are not making a commitment to change any of that in the foreseeable future. So I just I just ask the administration to bear that in mind as they're looking for opportunities in other ways, maybe, to facilitate this if we're not prepared to make the IT investment.
Thank you, councillor Horrall. Councillor Hiscock, you raised your hand.
Yes, I did, Chair. Thank you. I just want to make a comment about this virtual meetings thing. Yeah. The equipment is is not necessarily the best that is available at the moment, but it does work. For most people, it works. And the idea that we should just get back because the government tells us to get back, I think has been pretty well trash by every company in the country. If you look at our own civil service, working in London, they haven't gone back despite the government's pleased to. And it's just nonsense to suggest that we'll just, no, it's all over, it won't affect us. We should all get back in a room together and meet properly because it's dangerous. And frankly, I'm not prepared to do that. And I will take proper advice from medical sources before I allow anybody to tell me I've got to get back into a room with a load of other people and attend a meeting because someone else can't do it because I haven't got the right kit. It's just insane. And I think it's dangerous to even suggest it.
Councillor Hiscock, I think you've misunderstood what councillor Horrall was saying there somewhat. Councillor Gemmell, you raised a question.
I'm afraid it's that we joined on the on the virtual meetings. I'm sure everybody is aware of my comment. And this evening is an A bladed demonstration that I left work half an hour early and still couldn't get to be here on time. I'd rather the meetings were actual. But in the light that they may not be, I would also like that the meetings were accessible by people at work. It is. It is very difficult for those of us who have gone back to work.
Thank you, councillor Gemmell. Well, as we all know, this evening, I keep going off camera as soon as I click off of the team's meeting itself to look at the agenda pack being a one system. So I'm on and off camera, and that means I have to then flip back to mute. So whilst I accept that the technology isn't ideal, I think the point councillor Horrall was making was less so about getting us all back face to face and more so about some of the reasons are through choice rather than as a result strictly of COVID-19. And councillor Horrall was certainly not suggesting that we ignore medical advice and all cram into a room. Of course, she was saying it would be safe to do so if we followed the guidance and recommendations on the medical advice. So having made those points, we were, recommendations were that due to continuing restrictions on operation of public venues and associated operating costs, the Guild will remain closed general public hire for the next 12 months, but the venue only service be provided. And that virtual meetings, the council committees continue for the remainder of 2021 committee calendar, but that's reviewed on a quarterly basis. Are we all agreed that with that recommendation that I mentioned earlier, a recommendation to Cabinet? But we then agree with this paper?
Agreed.
Agreed. I'm afraid I don't agree, Chair.
Okay, councillor Horrall. Shall we, councillor, sorry, Mr Watson? Do we take whether we agree or not agree to Cabinet? Is that useful for them to see how many of us supported the paper and how many of us didn't?
Thank you, Chair. I'm just looking back at the recommendations. I think I think what the committee were being asked to do was to pass on some comments to Cabinet. And I think they've certainly certainly done that. I don't think we're necessarily being asked to agree the paper as such.
Thank you, Matthew. It was my understanding that the bottom three recommendations were for Cabinet and the top two were for us. But, okay. Councillor Horrall, did you have another comment? Or was that one you'd already made? Because I've only just seen it in my chat function.
Well, just the the it is clear at the bottom of this paper, it asks us, it doesn't say to to comment. It just gives us one and two recommendations. So I personally am not supporting one and two. If you're asking us to comment, which we've all been able to undertake in the last few minutes, that's fine. I'm just not supporting one and two as currently articulated. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, Laura, you were going to come in.
Chairman, I could just try and assist. On page 185, members, the there's a cover sheet to this report, which asks that the attached committee report, which sets out those recommendations you're just discussing, is being presented to Cabinet. It is recommended scrutiny committee comment on the proposals within the report. So indeed, it is not essential for this committee to indicate their support or otherwise for the proposals, just merely to to comment on them. And it would seem at the moment, Chairman, there is a there is a mixture of views being expressed by the committee, which would be captured, of course, by the minute.
Thank you. I shall also put it down that not all members supported this as our recommendations to Cabinet. So thank you, everybody. Right, so now moving on to the next item on our agenda. So many of you will recall at the previous scrutiny meeting, members asked officers to propose effective method for the scrutiny of the quarterly performance reports so that they could be thoroughly scrutinised without the time constraints. And that would also then free up more time in the scrutiny meetings for other papers to be brought to it also. So the paper here is a proposal to establish a performance panel. Scrutiny is being asked to agree the proposed terms of reference and to make nominations to the panel. I understand that councillor Cutler and councillor Todd, you were going to introduce this paper to us?
Yeah, I don't know if you've had enough of seeing me and whether councillor Todd wanted to introduce it, but he doesn't appear to have.
No, I'm here.
Would you like to introduce it? Yeah, go on.
Very, very happy to introduce this. Thank you very much indeed. So just to go through the paper, in essence, this came from a decision that, or a proposal that came from the scrutiny committee at the last meeting, that officers produce a proposal for how the quarterly performance reports would could be scrutinised in greater detail, potentially involving a member sub-panel that would report its findings through to this committee. And in essence, this is what's attached, is what the officers have are proposing based on that recommendation. And the intention is, as it highlights at the beginning, that the there will be a subcommittee of the scrutiny committee, which does a review of the quarterly performance and financial monitoring information. And in essence, reports back to the next scrutiny committee with an overview of any KPIs that it wants to highlight and any recommendations agreed by the panel in terms of the further scrutiny work plan. It's fairly straightforward. It gives us a chance for a deep dive on the KPIs and the budgets in a way that's difficult to do with everything else on the agenda within a two-hour meeting. In line with the normal principles of proportionality, it suggests a five-member committee with three from the administration side and two from the opposition. But the chairman, the chairperson would would be from the opposition, as we do with the main scrutiny committee. So that's the proposal on the table. That's the response to the request from this committee at the last meeting. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, councillor Todd. That was very concerning. Do we have any questions regarding this proposal? Councillor Weir?
Thank you, Chairman. Councillor Todd, could you tell us how how the public would be involved in the panel that this paper proposes?
We had a discussion with officers about whether the the panel meeting would be a formal meeting in public with full democratic services support, or whether it would be more like an ISG where it would meet in private and then report back to the main committee. And in terms of resourcing, the intention is that it would be like an ISG, has been historically. But it's very important to say that that doesn't mean that the public won't have a chance to input on the KPIs. In fact, arguably, they'll have more of a chance. Firstly, because certainly from our point of view, and I'm sure the Chair of scrutiny would be of like mind, we are absolutely open for the public to make whatever comment they want and ask whatever questions they may want in the normal democratic way, either at Cabinet or at the scrutiny committee. And arguably, because there will have been work done, at least in future cycles, to really buy councillors in depth to properly scrutinise the the KPIs and performance, if they were to make their deputational comments at the scrutiny committee, potentially doing so in the context of having issues that need to be highlighted, brought forward by the subcommittee. So the public will still see these papers discussed. They will still have a chance to have to ask questions about them through the scrutiny committee. And well, it's obviously a matter for the Chair in terms of the scrutiny committee, but through the scrutiny committee and certainly through Cabinet, would be our view. Because it is important that the public also have this opportunity to scrutinise. And importantly, the intention is not that, you know, a secret paper goes off to the subcommittee that the public don't see, anything that that the KPIs and the report will still be public and still be available for people to see and to scrutinise and to ask questions about.
Thank you, councillor Todd. Do we have any other questions on this? Oh, councillor Gemmell.
Thank you, Chair. It wasn't actually a question. It was just a comment on the on the membership. Councillor Todd, you did mention proportionality in your introduction, that it would follow proportionality. That will not do it. It will have to say that it'll follow proportionality. Otherwise, we forever in a day will have the panel consisting of five members, three from administration, two for the opposition. Just wording difference, but it is important when the proportionality is changed.
Oh, absolutely. No, that's. In practice, we would need quite a big swing in either direction for it to be more than three-two. Obviously, if we get to four-one, which I'm sure both parties would dearly like to see, it does imply a slightly North Korean election result, either for the Conservatives or for the Liberal Democrats, or for some other party that currently has no representation on the council.
However, it would be incorrect if you left it as it was.
Very happy to have it changed. Obviously, this is a paper and a terms of reference that belongs to this committee. And as long as we don't suddenly start changing the resource implications of it, then we're very happy to take any change that we wish to. But it's not, it's your paper. So, I mean, you need to be happy to take any change.
I think you need to stop speaking. Just because it seems that you're rambling so hot. Councillor Horrall, you had a question?
Yeah, just a technical question. When it says five members of the scrutiny committee, can that include deputies?
From my perspective, that's a matter for this committee. I don't see why it shouldn't.
So I agree that it should include deputies to ensure that we get the rights, most most relevant people who might be have the biggest head for finance. I'm not sure what other members think. Does anyone disagree with that?
I'd agree with that, Chairman.
We all agree deputies should be included in that? They can be on the panel?
Yeah, I really agree.
Thank you, councillor Horrall. Councillor Brock, you had a question?
Sorry, it was virtually about held completely upon the issue of papers and before the normal scrutiny committee that would consider it, whether there was going to be a quorum requirement or the opportunity to have deputies to make up the mandatory number of five for any meeting. So I think that's largely been covered. But, I mean, depending on the on the timeliness, I assume there will be sufficient deputies to enable the meeting to occur without having to reduce the number and rely on a quorum.
Chairman, perhaps I can assist. This this group is, of course, a panel, so and doesn't include a quorum position. It can do if this committee wishes to move to that stage. But my view would be that if there were two members absent, that the panel would proceed because the panel produces a report, which then comes to this committee for review and onward comment onto Cabinet. So but if if members wish to include a quorum, then then of course we can.
My personal view is that I don't deem that necessary. Do any other members feel strongly the other way? Any members feel strongly we should have a quorum?
No.
I was happy by the response that the meeting can to take place without the mandatory five being there. So thank you.
Okay. Councillor Hiscock, you've raised your hand.
Yes, I have. I just thought we made maybe sensible just to check the the constitution about whether or not deputies can can be full members of subcommittees. Because there's a difference in deputising in a subcommittee, but I think the proposal is that deputies could become full members. I'm not sure that's constitutional.
If I can assist again, chairman, this isn't a subcommittee, it's a panel. So it doesn't it doesn't fulfil that that criteria. The common language is to call it a subcommittee. So it's a much more informal grouping than a subcommittee. So if you wish to include your deputy members to create your pool of members for this panel, that is of course within the within the committee's gift. Thank you.
I'm happy to. It was just I wanted to make sure the constitution is allowed.
Thank you, Chief Exec. Much appreciated. Councillor Gemmell, did I just see you raise your hand? Yes, I did.
I was going to say, however, if you wish to make it an ISG, you can choose from the whole of the council.
Well, now you've opened a can of worms. So if we're having ISG style, my question to this committee then, do we want it only for members of the scrutiny committee and deputies? Or do we want to open up to five members, three from the administration and two from the opposition, proportionality allowing from any member of the council? Does anybody have a preference whether we limit it to scrutiny members or otherwise? Okay.
Chair, I have a comment.
Councillor, sorry?
I was just trying, I was just trying to say to help move this along. I think we're all broadly in favour of how it was presented. We've clarified a couple of points about the the mandate being within the scrutiny committee and the proportionality. I don't think we need to make it any more complicated, because ultimately, we're doing some legwork for the scrutiny committee so that we can be more efficient in advance. And the number of members will be doing the sort of fuller analysis that would ordinarily have taken significant time at this meeting.
Okay, thank you councillor Horrell.
Chairman, I think councillor, yeah, councillor Weir and Cutler were indicating, chairman.
But both our hands have gone down, which is why I'm just about to ask them whether they still wish to speak. But thank you, Chief Exec. Councillor Weir, did you still wish to speak?
Yeah, I asked for a comment and I put my hand up because I wasn't getting called in the comments. I'm sorry. It's just, anyway, I think we should stick to the proposal as it stands in the paper. We had a discussion, as you mentioned earlier in the meeting, of the three policy and scrutiny committees. And we agreed that the ISG model was not being used anymore under the new constitution. I therefore think we shouldn't sort of default to something that we've agreed no longer operates. And the purpose of this is to to spread the burden of the work within the scrutiny committee. So I'd like to stick with the proposals as presented in the paper. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Power, you had a comment. And then I'd like to ask councillor Cutler, who raises his hand and put it back down again, if he'd still like to speak. So councillor Power first.
Thank you, chairman. I think we're all in agreement. We were the ones that said this needed more work and it's down to us to do the work. So let's make it members of audit. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Cutler. Did you wish to make a comment?
Yeah, I didn't really. My comment was the last, the same as the last two speakers.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any more questions or comments on this paper? Okay, then I shall go to debate. Would anybody like to debate the paper?
I think it's agreed, chairman.
I haven't got to that part. Thank you councillor Power. So I have some debates on this paper. I just want to firstly say thank you to the officers for putting this together and for consulting me as well throughout this. The we've got the role of the panel, those six points. I just wanted to confirm how after the initial meeting, which will happen within a week's time, how that will be fed back to this committee. Because of course, going forwards, that committee, that panel, sorry, that panel will then run prior to the scrutiny meeting. And I just wanted to put out there, how would all of us like for that to then feed into this? Would we like it as just an extra minute added to the minutes? Or would we like a briefing call? Or how would we like that communicated out to the public as well? Chief Exec, you're coming in to assist us.
I was only, I was merely going to offer to assist if that was helpful, chairman, but I can see now councillor Power wishes to comment. I mean, we are, shall we say, out of sync on this cycle, because normally the panel would meet before scrutiny and hence, of course, the report could be received at this committee and then committee have the opportunity to debate it and discuss it and ensure that the, in fact, the panel are scrutinised as to the effort they put in before comments are made up to Cabinet. But this cycle, we just have to go the other way around, because it is such an important panel to appoint to. We needed to make those appointments clearly before we could progress. So absolutely content if to have the panel meeting and indeed attach those minutes to the minutes of this meeting. Happy to circulate those to all members if if members wish, or if you're suggesting, happy to put in a call so that the scrutiny panel can feed back to this committee. We are flexible as to how to do that. But bearing in mind, of course, that Cabinet is is shooting on pretty quickly in the next couple of weeks. So we'd need to move on with that one.
So I'm happy with a note, but councillor Power, you wanted to comment?
Chairman, thank you. The chief exec expressed it very adequately. I think it does have to be a report back to scrutiny committee, so that scrutiny have the chance to give us a grilling on what we found when we dug into these KPIs. And also, we might have recommendations as a result of our meetings, and scrutiny should hear those. And so it takes judgement on us. Thank you.
So you think that should be via a call or some sort, councillor Power, rather than just we circulated the recommendations from your panel meeting and then comment if we need to? You'd prefer that we have a call and are briefed?
No, I prefer a written report, chairman. I think that's more efficient use of both panels' time and scrutiny's time.
Okay, thank you. Is the rest of the committee happy with a? The Weir? Councillor Weir, you wanted to speak?
Sorry, I just came in just as the debate was continuing there. My understanding is that obviously for the next, well, for the current report, we need special feedback. But in future, the meeting would normally happen before and it would report to the committee. We wouldn't need an additional report back. But sorry, I think we've moved on.
That's how I introduced my question, councillor Weir, with exactly as you just said. Councillor Brock, you wanted to make a point here?
Thank you. Based on councillor Power's comment, I think we are going to have a short written report. But I was going to comment on the wording of the draft, because it refers to presenting a verbal update. And I wanted just to clarify whether that was to be written or oral. And then there are just a couple of other typos in the draft, which obviously should be corrected before the the terms of reference are adopted.
Again, we plan on adopting those this evening, councillor Brock. Laurie, you wanted to speak?
I was just merely just checking the terms of reference there. I think indeed the report does talk about a verbal update, but I absolutely think a short written report is appropriate. And then potentially, the chairman of the performance panel would would introduce that report and lead any any discussion at scrutiny, I think, for you to comment on. So we'll add that, that a short report will be prepared, supplemented by a verbal update.
The short report, you'd like that going forwards, that we, when, not just for this meeting where we have the report, but in future meetings, Laurie, you then saying that we have the brief report and then the verbal update also for future scrutiny meetings? Is that what you mean?
Well, the officers won't thank me here. I suppose I think there needs to be some record of the panel meeting. So the officer team in attendance will take some notes, will obviously note down areas of exploration, areas of comment. And it's appropriate that there is a short, you know, set of notes that accompany the work of the panel that could be printed for this, for scrutiny and then a verbal update given. So yes, chairman, in short, forgive me.
Thank you. Does anybody else have any comments on this paper? So having looked at this paper, are we all happy to adopt this paper this evening for use for the quarterly reports going forwards?
Subject to correction of the typos.
Subject to correction of the typos. I'll let you pick those up separately with Matthew.
Agreed.
Agreed.
Well, that makes the next is way far quicker.
Yeah. Yeah, you do. You know.
Chair, sorry. Just before we move on, we need to take some nominations for the panel?
Absolutely. So I would like to nominate councillor Horrell as Chair of that panel and councillor Godfrey as the other member of that panel. Who would we like nominated from the administration, please?
May I speak?
Yes, you may.
Can I put forward the councillor Power, councillor Crask and councillor Brock?
You may. So you're the nominees. Okay, and happy to be part of that panel? Do we agree those as a group?
Agreed.
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 Have you got those, Matthew? Matthew, have you got those? Okay.
I've got, I've got those. Thank you.
Wonderful. Thank you very much. So we officially have our panel set up. So thank you to all of you. Right, so the next one will be much faster. So the Q1 paper will be referred to that panel. So I won't ask you for questions in debate, because that panel will pick this up and feed back to this. I'm aware Simon Howson was available for us should we need that. But I'm afraid you need to make yourselves available, yourself available for the panel instead. Moving on to item 10 on the agenda, appointment to the partnership for South Hampshire scrutiny committee. So we need to consider the appointments to the external body. Is it a I push committee, but it's a scrutiny committee. I would like to propose that councillor Horrell and I go forward for that. Do we have as lead and deputy, do we have nominations from the administration?
Chair, yes. Sorry, it's Matthew again. Earlier on, I received a nomination for councillor Hiscock for the main position and councillor Clear for the deputy position.
Okay, as it was, members of the administration who were actually on the push committee, I thought the scrutiny should come to the opposition. But we shall take a vote on that. Do you need us to vote individually?
Yes, please, Chair. I mean, just just before I run the vote, if that's all right, if I could just confirm that those nominations are seconded. For if you take the first, the main position, councillor Hiscock and councillor Horrell, if I could just confirm a second for those nominations.
I second councillor Horrell.
I'll second councillor Hiscock, councillor Weir.
Thank you, members. And then, yeah, I'll just do a very quick roll call. If members could indicate for either councillor Hiscock, councillor Horrell or to abstain. Councillor Becker.
Councillor Hiscock.
Councillor Brock.
Councillor Hiscock.
Councillor Brook.
Councillor Horrell.
Councillor Crask.
Councillor Hiscock.
Councillor Hiscock.
Councillor Hiscock.
Councillor Horrell.
Councillor Horrell.
Councillor Gemmell.
Councillor Horrell.
Councillor Power.
Councillor Hiscock.
Councillor Scott.
Councillor Horrell.
And councillor Weir.
Councillor Hiscock.
Thank you, members. That nomination would go to councillor Hiscock then. And then I'll repeat the same exercise for the deputy position. And the nominations are councillor Clear and councillor Brook. First of all, if I could just confirm that those are seconded, please?
Yes, I'm happy to second that, Matthew.
And I'm happy to second councillor Brook.
Thank you, members. And again, if members could indicate for councillor Clear, councillor Brook or to abstain. Councillor Becker?
Councillor Clear.
Councillor Brock?
Councillor Clear.
Councillor Brook?
Councillor Brook.
Councillor Crask?
Councillor Clear.
Councillor Hiscock?
Councillor Clear.
Councillor Horrell?
Councillor Brook.
Councillor Gemmell?
Councillor Brook.
Councillor Power?
Councillor Clear.
Councillor Scott?
Councillor Brook.
And councillor Weir?
Councillor Clear.
Thank you, members. And that nomination would be for councillor Clear. Thank you, Chair. That's the nominations for the for the main position and the deputy position completed.
Thank you, Matthew. Much appreciated.
Can I just add a comment? So we've, we've accepted the the performance panel, we've accepted the draft terms of reference and we've immediately contradicted them.
Do you want to expand, councillor Gemmell?
Well, the, wait a minute, the membership at the end of that paper that we've just accepted, the fourth, the fourth line in the in the membership panel paragraph, that the chairperson will be from the opposition.
This is for the push scrutiny committee rather than the panel. I absolutely agree that scrutiny committees, when the administration.
I beg your pardon. We did, I did have a crackling, so I obviously missed you swapping over the paper, because I thought that was.
No, I agree that scrutiny should always go to the opposition, but we've been overruled by the administration. Scrutiny work programme, item number 11 for 2020, 2021. Are we all happy to note that?
Noted.
Noted.
Lovely.
Yeah, agreed.
No questions on those at all? No? Okay. And in that case, we shall go to our final, oh, come away from my notes, to our final forward plan of key decisions for noting, pages 297 through 302. We note those and or do we have any questions?
Noted.
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 I'm not getting any questions come up. So we have done extraordinarily well this evening. And that then concludes our business for this evening. And I'd like to thank you all for your time. And we bid you a lovely rest of the evening. I shall close the meeting.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Chair.
Thank you very much.